The December 10, 2012 meeting of the East Penn School District Board and School Directors, if you would like to come to order, please rise and bring your
....................................
The next item on the agenda is requests to address the board. We have quite a few requests to address the board this evening, so I'll remind everyone that you are limited to three minutes. And when I raise my hand, please conclude your remarks so the next person can speak. I'd also ask for courtesy that if you're repeating remarks of someone else, you perhaps forbear simply repeating them, but you're entitled to your three minutes. So the first one I have on the list is Mr. David Key of McCongee, speaking on busing.
Good evening. My name is David Key. I live in Rainy One Two. I have a two-year-old daughter. Recently, I went to a presentation about the Willow Elementary busing issue, and I was concerned about some of the things I heard and saw. My main concern was that I don't believe you've fully analyzed the traffic impact this will have if you eliminate the bus within the mile-and-a-half radius. Those are all very heavily traveled streets. I know you anticipate more students walking, but I also believe that there'll be plenty of students that aren't going to be walking, and they're going to be driven by their parents. There's a concern if they need to come early, and parents need to drop off, things like that, that I don't believe have been fully considered and need additional looking into. One other concern that I had was regarding the weather. It was brought up at the meeting. It was kind of left ambiguous, you know, what that walkway needs to be paved by the township by the school. You know, what if it's let out early? It's going to be all snowy. And if it's all snowy, you might have a lot of parents coming to pick up their student or son or daughter. So those are some of my concerns with this. I don't believe it's been adequately looked into. I think it needs a little more looking into than the small study that was done. That's all I think it needs to be.
The next person I have is Mr. Edward Crumman of McCongee.
Good evening. My name is Edward Crumman. Glad to be here and I'm here to just voice my concerns about the busing also at Willow Lane Elementary. I attended a meeting on the 27th with some members from the East Penn School District and concerned parents and Dr. Boyer. We heard from a consultant who went over a study that was done. The gentleman did a fine job going through that, but a lot more issues were raised. And the main issue everybody brought up was the safety of the children. And that's why I'm here. It's about our children and about the safety and concerns about drop-off, pickup. As questions were asked about details related to how all logistics happen and what kind of improvements would be done throughout Lower McCongee to make the roads safer, there was a lot of talk of, well, we could do this, we could do that. We're looking into that. We need to work closely with the school board with the township. Concerns the parents had that I heard and concerns myself were that it's all still a lot of talk and still a lot of things have to be worked through. So the main item would be that we want to be involved, we want to be part of it, and we want to have the board look at that meeting on the 27th. I'm not sure if anybody from the board was there, but it would have been nice to hear and hear from some folks too there, because they might have known to address some of the questions. But I have a third grader and I have a soon-to-be-two-year-old, and it's a fantastic school. Just this safety issue with the busing is a bit of a concern. It's almost nice.
Thank you, Mr. Crumman. The next one I have is Manal Lamani.
Hi, this is Manal Lamani, and I have three kids. Two of them go to Willow Lane Elementary School. One is a fourth grader and another is a second grader. And the third one is going to be ready in two more years for kindergarten. So I have some concerns about the busing, and I want to speak this on behalf of a group of parents who is now going to be having busing. So we have a common concern, and I want to bring all those common concerns with you. One of the point is the distance, 1.5 miles. So this is the elementary school kids you're talking about. 1.5 miles is a person and elderly will do for a workout. On a very fine sunny day, we tried one day from my house, it's like 1.3 miles to school. By the time I came back, it was an hour and 10 minutes. So if I think, and this was a nice sunny day in May, if I think to do this every day, I'm giving away three hours just in walking. And then on top of it, if I have a kindergartner, so I'm walking like, you know, four times a day, which is like six hours of walking, that's, I think, too much of workout for a parent for no reason. If we all stop, and I guess most of the parents, even though we are doing all this walkability study and we are thinking that they're going to walk, but I guarantee most of the parents are not going to allow their kids to walk. The study which was done was only on the four major intersections. I live in Sunflower Lane, and they're not asking me to go through Sunflower, through the fire station, but going on Chablis. From Chablis, if we have to go to Willow Lane, I have to cross almost four to five intersection roads, which even right now, when I take my kids to walk, we stop at each intersection, we make sure no car is coming, because it is at the major road, Sauerkraut, and there's continuous traffic on that. So when we say that my kids are going to walk, if I'm not able to walk with them, I'm asking them to be responsible at each and every intersection. And you're talking this for 315 students. If one of them is not paying attention and is on the road, and God forbid anything happens, who's going to be responsible for that? From 315 students, I would say more than 20 to 25, no more than 20 to 25 would be walking. So you are asking that 200 cars would be there touching Willow Lane, going through all these intersections. How much danger it is for those 25 to 30 kids also who are walking? We're just giving more and more danger instead of providing more safety. There are ways, it's not like we don't want to work with you on cutting off the budget. We do understand all that is also necessary with this economy, but there are ways to work on the budget, not at the time of safety. Can I just take one second?
One sentence.
One of the line examples, I'm sorry to bring that up, is the big brochure of Agenda printed today, and we have multiple copies. It was all online, that's not needed. Those are some of the costs we can cut down and give safety to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamani. Next person I have is Mr. Paul Singh of Boilane. All right. Mr. Jason Campbell of McCongee.
Thank you, member of the board. My name is Jason Campbell, the father of two four-and-a-half-year-olds that will be attending Willow starting next year. My family lives in the last phase of the Graymore development and amongst the furthest from the Willow Run School at approximately 1.3 miles. Since learning of the initiative to remove busing from the 1.5-mile radius, many of us affected have noted the number of safety concerns surrounding this decision. It seems a questionable decision to remove busing from the budget prior to having these concerns addressed and solutions implemented. It seems most prudent to reinstate the busing until further discovery can take place. Furthermore, much question has surfaced surrounding the walking viability study. If it was the intention all along for Willow to be considered a walking school, it seems there would not have been a need for such a study, and that it would have been taken into account within the original design of the Willow School, and many of the key concerns would have already been addressed. Of this, the 1.5-mile radius puts many of our children in a situation where they must cross several unsupervised intersections. This proposal is for an elementary school, where it's quite unreasonable to expect these children to walk out of their developments, much less all the way to school. In the call for further evaluation of the walking plan, I question whether anyone has looked at alternative cutoffs for the affected radius. Perhaps much of the proposed savings could be reaped from a smaller radius while also increasing the ability to more fully address the safety of those within that radius. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. The next person I have is Richard McGinnis of McCongee.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, for hearing us. My name is Richard McGinnis. My wife, Mary, and I have three students who have moved from private school into the East Penn School District because we found it to really be an excellent school district addressing a lot of the needs that even the private schools could not. I understand as a business owner, the constraints that budgets offer. However, I also know that there are solutions to every problem. $60,000 worth of savings was the amount that was quoted at the meeting at Willow Lane. Versus a $120 million budget, I find it to be a minuscule amount of money. There could be reorganization of priorities. There's always the scary thought of tax increases. But at the safety of a child, I don't think there's any amount of money I'm not willing to pay to ensure the safety of my child and the other children within the district. I can echo the sentiment that a mile and a half is pretty far for a five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11-year-old to work, to walk twice a day, but you're going to hear that over and over again. I want to give you a little bit of an idea that Sauerkraut and Willow Lane, as a guy who walks and jogs once in a while when I try to get in shape, it's dangerous. There are no flashing lights to identify Willow and Sauerkraut as a school zone three years after the opening of the school. There are no, class A, I believe, was designation crosswalks for a school area. There is no way in the world I will allow a nine-year-old from my home to walk to that school. I will be one of those drivers. The human side of the story is, I pray that nothing happens to a child. My family suffered 40 years ago, the loss of my cousin. Forty years later, it's still a very large weight to carry. God forbid something happens, the entire community is going to fall on your shoulders looking for responsibility. It's not your responsibility to protect our children 100%. It's ours as parents, and it's why we're exercising our right to speak to you today. Please, I implore you guys, ladies, gentlemen, to reconsider the decision to make Willow a walking school before it is set up to be that school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. The next person I have on the list is Dr. Paul Nappenberger of McCongee.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the school board for your work. You do a great job, you have a great school district, and that's why a lot of people moved to this area because of the school district. But as you've been hearing, there is concern, one of the decisions that you have made recently on busing at Willow Lane. A couple of concerns I have, my daughter is in fourth grade, and next year she'll be a fifth grader, the oldest of the group. I'm not comfortable letting her walk to school from our building, we live at Beaumont. So I'm not comfortable letting her walk. We would be driving her. But right now, majority of the children are being bused to school. You need to see what Willow is like in the morning with drop-off and in the afternoon at pickup. It is crazy, it's chaos. Parents, long lines trying to get into the school, people backed up on the road. It's not even a safe environment when parents are picking up and dropping their kids off. So I have some major concerns with the design, the way Willow was laid out. Now, I understand it's back in the property because of the flood zone, but it's not laid out properly for a walking school. The distance, the crosswalks, it's not safe. It's not safe for our children, and I am concerned about that. And I beg you to reconsider your decision on busing to Willow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nappenberger. The next name I have on the list is Eric Goppen of McCongee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Eric Goppen. I too would like to thank you for your service. You all have a thankless job, and when nobody comes out to speak, you know that all as well. Well, tonight, we are going to hear a large crowd that is here to address something, so there is obviously a problem that I hope you would all pay close attention to. We are here politely and respectfully, but firmly, put forth our concern about the Willow Lane busing. The first thing I think you will hear over and over that we would like this, will the board postpone this decision until all community input and solution suggestions have taken place. The responsible course of action will be to put all safety measures in place first, test them, fix any problems that may arise, and then remove the buses if that is the prudent thing to do. There are multiple issues here, and as you will hear, not every neighborhood is the same. I'm sure my colleagues will all tell their own personal concerns. Mine in Brookside Farms is that traffic heading north on Willow Lane, in order to head east on Sauerkraut, is using our neighborhood of Brookside Farms as a shortcut. This was evident with the recent PP&amp;L replacement of the poles there. This practice will only increase with students crossing that intersection at Willow Lane and Sauerkraut, as those crossing in our neighborhood streets will just encounter one more thing. This is just one unintended consequence of this decision. There are many others that are now unforeseen and not shown in the traffic study. I'm a volunteer for the Lower McCongee Fire Department. I drive an emergency vehicle with lights and sirens all up and down Willow Lane and Sauerkraut Lane. Motorists do not stop for our vehicles with lights and sirens stopped. They try and run the intersections all along Sauerkraut and Willow Lane and Mill Creek. They try and inch forward before we get there with our emergency vehicles. If the motorists do not stop for our emergency vehicles, what are they going to do for our children? I think it is disingenuous that board members have not walked the walk in this case. This group of taxpayers is directly affected by this decision, and we are strenuously opposing it. The bottom line for me is that this decision seemed to be made solely upon money and not on safety. Our children deserve more than just being in line in a budget. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Goppen. The next name I have is Timothy Weiner of McCongee.
Good evening. I'd like to, my name is Timothy Weiner. I live on Magliot Court from the Beaumont and Brookside development here in Lower McCongee Township. I'd like to take this opportunity to discuss, as many of my neighbors would, the safety plan and busing issue for Willow Lane Elementary. I believe what has been shared with us up until this point, in many ways, is a flawed and incomplete study. One of the things I would like to address, and I was at the meeting on the 27th of November at school, to discuss the plan that was provided to us as far as the walking study. This study did not encompass the 1.5-mile area that children would be walking. Hence, therefore, I feel that this plan is flawed. If we're going to do a study, let's do a complete study to fully demonstrate the capabilities and the flaws of, not flaws of this plan. I'd also like to bring up at this point, the traffic study. Now, to the best of my knowledge, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe a traffic study had been conducted in this area since the school was built, and I'm not sure exactly when the last study was done. With the amount of homes that have been built and the population has increased in this area, how did a traffic study not have been conducted to fully understand the impact of making Willow Lane Elementary a walking school? So I implore you, please, before making any decisions and moving forward, to take this into consideration. A traffic study is vital to the safety plan and moving forward with this study. Can the school be a walking school? I think many of us feel it can be, but I think what has been shared with us up until this point does not demonstrate, and your actions and your lack of action up until this point, really does not put our children's safety as a first priority. So please, I implore you to consider that before moving forward. So again, I just ask that before making any final decisions, let's do what's best with the children, and again, not being a monetary issue, but please, do not take our children's safety lightly, and let's, please, we're going to work, as some of my other neighbors have stayed to work with you folks, but please, let's have an encompassing study that puts our children's safety at first, at firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. The next name I have is Jill Ahn of McCongee.
I am also a parent of Willow Lane, my child, three young children go to Willow Lane. I live in Brookside Farms, and so we're rather close to the school. But even being that close, we're very concerned about the safety of the walking Willow Lane. As previously discussed, the development is a perfect bypass when all the traffic backs up, up Willow to Sauerkraut. They race through our development like you can't imagine. I've been in the street telling people to slow down. They all bypass through. I can only imagine what's crossing the gorges there. Traffic even gets worse, it's going to get worse, and all these kids are now directed to walk through our development, cross all the streets. It's just asking for problems, I know it. Also, when these kids get let out of school, we're expected to walk down to Sauerkraut to the intersection to cross. I witnessed just last week, two third graders walking home from school, up the hill, crossing that Wheatland. It's an extremely, extremely bad intersection to cross. The only way sometimes we can get across is when the buses physically stop to let us cross because the traffic is so bad there. And I witnessed these boys walking. Even though you tell children next year to go down through the intersection or the gorges, they're on their own, they're going to do what they want to do. It's more convenient going straight up the hill, and that's what's going to happen. And it's very dangerous. Taking up, dropping off next year, school's going to get a lot of calls, my child, they're safe. I don't know how school's going to handle all those calls. Kids get released from school, it's going to be very dangerous. Kids, all the parked cars, children running between parked cars, behind the cars, all the SUVs now, cannot see. I'm very concerned about the safety of these children walking, and I just implore you to rethink this, work with the parents especially, go to the school on a bad weather day, because you can't even make the left on Sauerkraut sometimes to get towards the school. That's how that is. You sit there and you wait for the school to open, because the parents are letting their kids out of the car until the school's open. It takes 20 minutes to get possibly a few hundred kids out of their cars next year and into the school, even have a lot of late starts to go.
The next name I have is Susan Coonan from McCongee.
Good evening. My name is Susan Coonan, and I too am a parent of two students at Willow Lane. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. I reside on Wheatland Drive in Brookside Farms. I'm here to follow up on my comments that I made at last week's board meeting regarding the plan for making Willow Lane a walking school. Again, I want to reiterate that I believe the East Penn School District is moving too quickly in its efforts to make our school a walking school. Please, do not sacrifice careful and thoughtful planning for seemingly quick savings to the bottom line. As part of this careful and thoughtful planning, we need to be absolutely certain that we are utilizing the most up-to-date information available to us when implementing a new transportation plan for Willow Lane. Are we? I don't think so. And here's an example. According to the engineer who presented his walking plan to parents on that infamous November 27th meeting, his recommendations were based on the traffic impact study from 2007. And I contacted Lower McCongee Township and found out the date of that study, which was March 5th, 2007, a study that is more than five years old. So here are my questions. Was the engineer aware of a roadway sufficiency analysis report, or R-S-A-R? Again, that's roadway sufficiency analysis report dated October 21st, 2009. This report was prepared for Lower McCongee Township by McMahon Transportation Engineers and Planners. Not only does it include traffic data from 2008, but it also has future projected traffic data for 2018. Another question. Was the engineer also aware of the recommendations made in this report? I'm referring specifically, if you look at the report, to Table 9 on page 30, which states that recommended improvements for the intersections of Sauerkraut Road and Willow Lane, and Sauerkraut Road and Mill Creek Road, the two main intersections that we have heard a lot of parents talk about that are near the school, the recommended improvements in this report would be to install traffic signals. Also, was the engineer aware of another report? The Lower McCongee Township Transportation Capital Improvements Plan. That's the Transportation Capital Improvements Plan dated November 2nd, 2009, which indicates a construction completion date for these traffic signals in 2018. Also, if the engineer was indeed aware of these future improvements, why didn't he say so? Particularly when parents, of which I was one at the November 27th meeting, asked, why couldn't we install traffic lights at these intersections? There is no evidence to suggest that the engineer used either of these reports to formulate his walking plan recommendation. And so my final question is, why not? And so my final question is, why not?
The next name I have is John Jansen of McCunchee.
Just like a lot of the other people you've heard, I'm a parent who has two children at the Willow Lane School. I have a kindergartner and a third grader, I saw them have children at the school for a period of time. Like everyone else here, right, you know, we understand the need, you know, to control the budget, but we have some concerns about the safety of the plan. And, you know, I guess my biggest concern is that, overall, right, since this has been brought up probably a couple of years ago, the plan to do the blessing seems very reactive by the board and the administration. You know, two years ago, when the blessing plan was first adopted, there was a little bit of discussion, there was no even discussion about a walkability study. And it's when the parents pushed back, most recently, that some of these actions were taken, even though the grants available to do a walkability study have been there since 2009. You know, the Willow Lane was, was built as a walking school, and you would think that some basic things would happen if that truly was intended to be a walking school. You know, the line of sight for the school is, is not optimal. You know, there's no school zone signs, even, even today, even without a walking school, those really are signs that have to be up. Blessed was built, which is not a walking school, has school zone signs up. And, you know, ultimately, it's the parents have to continually raise safety issues, right? And people referenced the meeting that happened on the 27th of November, I was at that meeting myself, and, you know, there was a lot more questions than answers, right? The study looked at intersections that were really one intersection away from the school. You know, the recommendation itself is that students have to walk a mile and a half through many, many other intersections. When asked about that, I think the engineer said, "Well, that would take a lot of time to look at all the intersections." I think given the number of students we're putting on the streets, we need to take the time to look at all the intersections. And overall, look at the plan, and stop, and be sort of reactive, where the parents have to continue to bring issues toward the administration and the school board, what was this? The other issue I have is that if you take a look at the survey that was done for the walkability study, if you go to the website of the Safe Routes Organization, which really provides the guidelines for doing the walkability study, they actually have on their website a survey, which they recommend that the school administration get parents to fill out. To my knowledge, no parents have been involved in this, and in fact, when they do the two-day assessment, they usually recommend that they have parents, maybe remember the PTO, participate in the two-day assessment. Again, to my knowledge, no parents were involved. The other concern I have is that if you look at their recommendation, their, their recommendations and what this school board plans to do is inconsistent. Their recommendation is that children under the age of 10 should not walk, and they also have a recommendation that the walking distance should be less than a mile. Now, I understand the state guidelines is a mile and a half, but these are the people that are responsible for putting together a safe walking route, and their recommendations are not under the age of 10, and not over a mile. So overall, right, I have concerns that, you know, we're looking to do this simply for the savings of the, of the money. And, you know, I understand that the board has a fiduciary duty, but you also have a fiduciary duty to the safety of our children. And just like everyone else, I would ask that you reconsider this before you make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. The next name I have is Lee LaRusa of McCunchee.
Thank you. My name is Lee LaRusa. I'm a parent of three children. My daughter is six and in first grade, and in the next two years, I have three children that will walk and cross along Sauerkraut and Mill Creek Roads to get to Willow Lane each day. I'm here because as a father and as a board-certified pediatrician, I have serious, realistic concerns about children's safety in the current plan to do the make blessing. Working in a pediatric trauma center and caring for children in a pediatric ICU, I know firsthand that the safety concerns of the parents are not disingenuous. Yet I'm not here to simply oppose a walking plan, but rather, I'd like to suggest an alternative radius for walking to be three-quarters of a mile, rather than the planned 1.5 miles. And I'll offer the following to explain. In 1963, an article published by the American Society of Planning Officials cited the recommended maximum school walking distance to be one-half to three-quarters of a mile. A study in 2007 showed that half of students living less than a mile walk to school, but only 3% of students living more than a mile walk, 3%. And in March of this year, a presentation at the 2012 Active Living Research Annual Conference showed that the average distance perceived by parents to be close enough to walking was .88 miles. Yet despite that perception of walkability, the average distance those same students actually walked was less than .69 miles. So let's be honest and stop calling your plan a walking plan. The data from nearly 50 years of asking the question, "How far will students walk?", tell us otherwise. Your plan does not adequately take into account the several hundred cars that will be shuttling students to school each day, and therefore puts anyone who chooses to walk in greater danger than the walkability study suggested. Let's call it a transportation plan. Let's make the radius three-quarters of a mile, a distance that historically and actually accounts for who will walk. Get all the proper safety measures in place before initiating any plan. You will still save money on busing from those students that should and will actually walk, and keep those walkers from traversing a gauntlet of cars converging on Willow Lane each day by busing or remaining students. Lastly, let me say, I understand you are in a tough position. There are many bright and well-intentioned parents in the district that want to partner with you to find a solution that takes all of you into consideration. Let's find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. LaRusa. I believe this is Matthew Lu of McCunchee.
Hello, my name is Matthew Law. I apologize for my poor handwriting. I want to thank members of the board for hearing this. I attended our last, the last meeting on, at the end of November, and it was quite an eye-opener. I'll be honest, it was the first meeting that I attended on this. I've heard through neighbors and whatnot about some of the things that have gone up, but I just wanted to see and hear for myself, hearing different extremes. And to be honest, that, that meeting motivated me to come here. And I think a lot of us, knowing the demographic of my neighborhood, getting this many people to attend something that doesn't involve sports or our kids singing or doing something in front of a large group is pretty impressive. And I guess a lot of things have been brought up here, and I won't repeat them. Two things that I just thought were worth mentioning, one, I think the, the amount of money being discussed is a bit disproportionate to the amount of emotions that, that this brings up. Life is a balancing act, as a vice president of sales at my company, we do that every day. It's all about playing, playing the pluses and minuses, and I think this has some, some real things to consider. Another thing on safety, I have three children, high school, middle school, and I live at Willow Lane. Would I let my third grader walk to school? Absolutely. There are times that I would, there are times that I wouldn't. But another thing I think that isn't properly taken into consideration is what happens in groups. Group dynamics versus individual dynamics are vastly different. I let my third grader make lunch for herself on weekends all the time. Very rarely is there an issue. When there are groups of three or more and they make lunch for themselves, it's an issue. I can only imagine what would happen on daily walks. Finally, I think the reality is, again, our, our demographic, middle class, working parents, it's, I do not see kids walking to school on bad weather. We have parents that drive kids a block and a half and sit in an idling car to wait for the school bus. That's their decision. I just do not see in snowy and foggy, rainy weather, these kids being walked, and my concern is, is the traffic snarls that will be created at the school itself in an attempt of merging those kids that do walks with the buses, with parents that are driving. I just think these are all things that need to be considered, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Law. The next name is Todd Solomon of McCunchee.
Hi, my name is Todd Solomon. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss the board. I live in the Graymore area that goes through Willow Lane. I have three children, a nine-year-old and two five-year-olds, and this proposal to cut busing, I think, was, is, hasn't been sufficiently thought out for several reasons. Safety, as well as the financial aspects of it. As many of my neighbors have addressed, the walkability study that only addressed the, the intersections nearest to the school, I live further up, Sauerkraut Lane, my children will have to cross at least four other intersections without crosswalks. The engineer that did the walkability study never looked at those crosswalks, and he just mentioned, the town or the board decides to do something later if they wanted to, to put in safety crosswalks, if that's what was desired. There's a lot of other issues that have been brought up. The town's law requiring snow removal, currently I believe it's 48 hours, I don't know what students would be doing in between that time, as they're trying to walk to school. And I know that there's other schools that walk, and they're successful so far, but not every school is the same. The roads leading to Willow Lane are a lot wider, cars go on average 40 miles per hour, which is pretty fast for that many children to be walking to school. And I ask as tactile that, that the detailed analysis of cost savings be shown to everybody. You know, we've been told $60,000 before this, the plans were put into place, I've seen what you're gonna do with the buses, change the plan, it doesn't address all the problems. And after all the costs, construction, how many crossing guards do you need? Been discussed 10 to 12, they may have to be paid. I'm just wondering how much money you're really gonna save? And if the school district does save money, where is, yeah, I think that the cost savings is just gonna be questioned in the town then. So in the end, the tactile is still to be put in the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. The next name is Mark Colman of McCunchee.
Good evening. I spoke to you a few months ago on this very issue, and there were very few parents then, but you see a lot more parents now. I'm kind of disheartened that since our last meeting, I've only heard more issues instead of less issues. Safety, again, we seem to be, the list seems to be growing, and it's not, not seem to be shrinking. We have a traffic study from 2007, as we've heard, not quite up to date. Cost, I heard at a, at the walking meeting, we talked about signage, bridging, alls I hear is cost, 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 so are we really saving money? Arrival and dismissal logistics, have we heard any? Do we have a plan? Lack of community involvement, who is taking leadership on this issue? It's beyond the school board. It goes back to the community, but who is taking leadership? We need to find a leader, and we need to find a committee, and we need to get this moving. Willow Lane becoming a walking school? As a board, right, and as a school district, we need to find things that remove impediments to kids going to class and learning. We can't have them delayed in school because of people dropping off, inclement weather, et cetera. The job of the school district, again, is to teach the kids not to put up impediments. And the need for open communication, it's critical. We all know it is, but it seems to be lacking, whether it's when meetings are being held or studies complete. So I just, I went through a list, I feel passionate about this. I spoke about that a few months ago, and it's, it's great to hear that the community is getting involved in this, because it's a very important issue. I just want this board to put as much emphasis on this issue as we have on our refinancing and our bond issues. This board, this school dri, school district needs to take a leadership position on this entire issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colman. Next name I have is Nancy Solomon of McCunchee.
My name is Nancy Solomon, and I too am a resident of Graymore. I have three children, a nine-year-old daughter, and I have twin five-year-olds. I also like to note that all three of my children suffer from ADHD. I'd like to, I'd like to address the board tonight with my concerns with the Willow Lane walking. The current plan is currently severely flawed. I have great concerns regarding the safety of our children. When the issue of walking was first mentioned, as a very active parent at Willow Lane, I expected at minimum, a survey of the families affected to ask us, "How will we handle this situation?" After all, survey monkey is free, and Willow has lightning out, along with many of the other parents. However, no input was ever requested from us. Yet I was shocked to read in a walkability study that only 25% of the students will be expected to walk. I live 1.3 miles away from school. This is a gross underestimation, especially when last week, a state trooper sat on a panel and looked at me when I asked him how he felt, and he told me it was not safe for my children to walk the 1.3 miles to and from Willow. I take that very much to heart when a state trooper tells me that about my babies. To touch briefly on some of my other concerns and trying hard not to repeat what my many, many neighbors have come out to say tonight. The traffic on Sauerkraut, the road is supposed to be 25 miles per hour. However, this road is designed for much higher speeds, and the traffic rarely follows that speed limit. Typically, it's about 40 miles per hour. With this going into effect, many of the, many of the cars are going to be trying to avoid the Mill Creek-Sauerkraut intersection on our side. As it is now, they spill into the other smaller roads such as Port and Saw Turn. This is going to be bringing heavier traffic flow into quiet neighborhoods. In addition, when we were discussing this walkability study with the surveyor, he only went to the first Saw Turn intersection, and he told us that all the neighborhoods are similar, and it warned him to investigate further. And when I asked him, "Why?", he turned to me and said, "Did I realize how long it would take him to walk there?" Yes, I do realize. I do that walk. I've tried to walk. I've done the walk on the nice days to try. We want to try. The residents aren't here to sit and complain. We would like to work with you, but nobody is reaching out to work with us. Nobody has asked us, "What can we do?" Quickly, I would just like to say, I'd like to propose a committee, including those from all the affected developments, members, residents who live there. Get us together, hear us out, give us our two cents, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Last request to address the board I have is from John Berger of McCunchee.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. I may look familiar, I was here a few times over the summer with the same very issue on Willow Lane, school busing issue, and as you can see, I've crossed some reinforcements. So, we have a highly educated parent base, and you guys are very highly educated, and you can see, when people communicate openly and are transparent with one another, and you see the value of social media, these days, everything is transparent, and we also want and demand that we have the same type of transparency in something that is so critical, i.e. the safety of our children. So I'm just gonna hit a couple bullet points, some of them were already mentioned, so I won't go too much into detail. We, I went to the walkability study event on the 27th, and I don't think that went very well as planned, it was supposed to be just a presentation, however, many more questions arose. It was rated highly as a very safe school to walk to, however, there were dozens of recommendations, and we have no idea whether these recommendations are guaranteed to be implemented. The cost of each was really, just kind of slipped past us without making much mention of those. The traffic study is outdated, we went over that. How much is everything gonna cost? The construction changes, the roadway markings, the school zone signage, the pedestrian bridge, we want to see transparency of these costs. The arrival and dismissal logistics, that's gonna be a nightmare, dropping kids off, picking them up, with the amount of cars that are actually gonna be going in and out of the school. A key component that was just recently mentioned, I'm gonna piggyback on this, is lack of community involvement. The public voice must be heard on this. I also recommend, as Nancy did, a committee to be formed with members of the board here, members of the PTO, Dr. Boyer- members of the PTO, Dr. Boyer, who I'm glad to see in attendance, uh, maybe the first student bus company, at least one parent from each of these affected communities. We voted you guys in, you guys worked for us, and, um, it's almost, um, hey, this is, but it was almost like an insult to our intelligence, um, a year or two ago, when the plan was kind of being force-bad, and we protested it, and only then did we say, oh, well, yep, there was a safety plan at the works. Now, on the swing of the walkability plan, there are a lot more questions. In conclusion, we need to open lines of communication. We wanna know about all the meetings. We wanna be involved. We wanna help you work on a solution and not just complain. A potential solution that I'd like to offer, like, uh, Dr. LaRusse said, the radius reduction. Can we reduce it to a half or three-quarters of a mile? We'll still have some savings, some of those dangerous intersections, um, that people are not counting for may be eliminated. It's really unrealistic to expect young children, many of which carry heavy backpacks and or musical instruments, to walk the distance one point three to one point five miles each way, especially in northeastern Pennsylvania when we have multiple months of inclement weather. And again, I, I strongly encourage the creation of a committee. I'd like to, uh, propose that we postpone the elimination of buses till we formulate this committee, have some open dialogue, uh, between yourselves and a lot of the other parties that with a stake in this, and, and only then will we make progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. That's the last request I have to address the board. We'll now move on to the item number three, the teacher presentation. Dr. Seidenberger.
We have Crystal Husser, who works for teacher at McCounji School. Please come to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, school board members, for having me here today. I am a very proud teacher at McCounji Elementary School, and I have some of my, um, my students with me tonight to help celebrate. I'm here tonight to celebrate the joint efforts of teachers, parents, and community members working together. Last year, McCounji Elementary School formed a walk team in order to participate in the Lehigh Valley Autism Walk. Through our efforts, we helped to spread awareness and raise funds to find a cure for autism. Participation and various fundraiser fundraisers, including penny challenge, bake sales, public campaign, and individual fun, um, fundraising efforts certainly made a difference. Our team at McCounji Elementary, McCounji's history train gang, raised a total of thirteen thousand, three hundred, forty dollars and forty-three cents. We were the top school team and earned a platinum award that was presented, um, a few weeks back to Mr. Best. Tonight, I'm here not just representing McCounji Elementary School's team, but also Lincoln Elementary, West Pittsville Elementary, and Willow Elementary. Together, we formed the East Penn Cares Team. We were the top company this year at the Autism Walk, raising twenty thousand, one hundred, seventy-two dollars and fifty-four cents. The total walk this year raised four hundred, ninety thousand, eighty-one dollars and thirty cents. So we're proud, Dr. Seidenberger, to celebrate with you and to offer, um, our platinum award for you to display here at the district. Thank you.
We appreciate all your input.
You have a political nominee.
I wish you a hand, I have a call.
Okay, thank you.
You can have a seat.
And you search for the, um, all four numbers.
Thank you very much. It's always good to see the involvement of our students and teachers with the community and with, uh, giving back to the community. We always appreciate seeing that. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the bond refinancing, and we have Mr. Scott Shearer from, uh, Public Financial Management, and Mr. James Vanguard from Rhodes and Simon here to help us.
All right, well, good evening. I have a few documents for you this evening related to this transaction. One has the blue cover, and the other is the one I will briefly go through, and then Bond Council will go through the other one that says resolution on the front page. Uh, if you remember, about a month or so ago, you gave the fin, uh, financing agreement to proceed with refinancing two of your smaller and shorter period bonds, two thousand seven and two thousand eight. Uh, so in that time, we went back to prepare all the necessary paperwork to then have a competitive auction, uh, today, so we think the results, uh, went real well for you. Um, you know, similar to what I mentioned when we were here back about a month or so ago. This is a relatively short transaction, and it's not a very large one, uh, so the board set the savings target, net savings target of two hundred and fifty thousand, and you'll see here that we did exceed that target. Uh, unfortunately, this is just because of the structure of the deal, being, you know, extremely short, this was not gonna be one of the transactions where we'd be able to come back with, you know, a much larger savings number, but we were just very happy that we were able to, uh, to exceed the floor or the target, and you'll also see that the competitive process, you know, worked very well, again, as usual, which provides a little bit extra benefit. So with that, why don't we go to page one? Page one is just a brief summary of the bids that we received today. Uh, the very top, uh, I guess the top third is the main one. Uh, we received five, uh, five main bids, uh, from Robert Baird, named after Scott, TD Securities, UPS, and Raymond James. Uh, column two is probably the most important one, where it says true interest cost, and that factors in that the commissioner, the PD, pays to the end of rate or where their investment banking firm, as well as their interest rates. You see Robert Baird had a true interest cost of point eight-seven, and then the ones at five were a little over one, uh, one point oh-one, one point oh-three, and one point four-three. So a pretty wide disparity in which different firms saw the market, and with, uh, Robert Baird submitting something substantially better than even second-place bidder, that did result in some additional savings that put us above, uh, the target. On page two, not a whole lot of opinion with the auction today, just because the bid that was placed by RW Baird was very good, so we did not see kind of a lot of tension and a lot of leapfrogging going on, again, just 'cause we saw a very good bid, uh, from, uh, Robert Baird, and so, so the actual chronology bid outline on page two. Page three is the two thousand seven, uh, bond that we were funding, which is the remaining amount, uh, that were left over from the transaction we did earlier. So about two and a half million of those bonds were remaining in column two, so we were refunding all those, with those existing rates ranging from a three and a half up to four percent. On page four, we also then refunded the remaining portion of the two thousand eight bonds, and in column two, you see a little over five million outstanding, with the interest rates ranging from three to three and a half percent. Skip to page six. So page six, based on the bid today that we received from Robert Baird, their actual interest rates and fees, uh, are all reflected on page six, so we're on the, let's look at column eleven. The net savings at net issuance cost and net of saves, shared savings, uh, are about three hundred and seventy-two thousand. You see the way that's realized, about eighty-seven thousand in the current fiscal year, and then about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Those numbers, I think, match pretty closely to what we showed you back, uh, last month, and then the balance is falling, and the remainder of years of this bond issue, roughly twenty to, say, forty thousand, uh, of, uh, net savings for the next couple of years. So again, the net, the target, net target was two hundred and fifty thousand, and we ended up getting three hundred and seventy-two thousand through the competitive process. On page seven, I find the most important number on this page is towards the middle in the box, which says yield of the issue. So we were actually able to lock in what's called the arbitrage yield, or what we need to report on many of the documents that your Bond Council will prepare, is a point seven-two percent. So it's a pretty good, uh, pretty good cost of capital for, uh, this refinancing. And then I won't go over it unless you agree with me, two, but page eight is now just how your overall debt portfolio looks with this refunding. Um, you know, everything looks very similar to typically what I've shown in the past. The top half is your gross debt service requirements, which means one interest due every six months, and then on the bottom half is net of, uh, state reimbursement. So again, this is more, uh, just of how your overall debt portfolio looks. And then lastly, uh, basically pages nine through thirteen reflect the credit rating report. I know we talked about this a little bit when I was here last month, uh, so one of the important steps that we had to go through, uh, to get the bond issued to the auction today, was to get, uh, go back to Moody's, uh, for, uh, credit rating, and they came back and reaffirmed the double A two credit rating, uh, very good credit rating, uh, here for a Pennsylvania school district, so the board should be applauded for, uh, the different policies in place and different budgeting practices to be able to achieve, uh, this credit rating. And add also then a tribute, which I did not point out on, uh, on one of the prior pages, because of the good credit rating and also because of the structure of the transaction, the school district saved money by not having to purchase bond insurance, so again, that added, uh, to the savings as well. So that's a quick overview of the numbers. Be more happy to answer any questions. We'll turn it over to your line.
Does anyone have any questions about this presentation from Mr. Shearer, Mr. Berger?
So you're basically saying, just the, the length of time, it's only five years?
Correct. Yeah, the two, the two main components.
Five or fifteen years out, there's a limited amount you can pay.
Yeah, yeah, it's the interest rates that we're refunding, as well as the time, or how many years are left on remaining debt. Uh, so the interest rates that we were funding were already, you know, relatively low, had three hands on, and then the term may be in a few years, is what was the kind of limiting factor, uh, to, to the net savings. From, from a benchmark standard, a lot of time for what's called, this kind of refunding is called a current year refunding, which is the rates we had to call dates, which are the two bond issues we were funding. A lot of times, uh, I, I know you said target two hundred and fifty thousand net saving, a lot of times the benchmark would be two percent saving, so roughly two percent of this going, eight million dollars, about a hundred and sixty thousand. We were actually closer to five percent. So from a, from a benchmark perspective, uh, we still well exceeded kind of the industry standards.
Any other questions? Mr. Shearer, I just want to bring up again, uh, for the public, the Moody's Investor Service does not only, uh, summarize that, uh, we have satisfactory reserve levels, but they actually had a paragraph running from page ten to the top of page eleven, where they discuss our, uh, fund balances and reserves, and indicate that, uh, this has all been done prudently in their estimation. This was part of why we still maintain our good bond rating. Any other questions for Mr. Shearer? I think we should have the, uh, bond resolution put on the, uh, table before we have the discussion from Bond Council. Could I have a motion, please?
Just a moment.
We're done. Mr. Shearer, we'll go on to Bond Council.
All right, thank you. Good evening, for being here. Uh, again, our role as bond counselors is to oversee the compliance with federal tax laws, federal securities laws, and state barring laws, ultimately giving the opinion that the bonds are validly issued and, uh, are exempt from federal state income tax. So I'm part of the team, working with the administration, put a lot of work into this, as well as the school district solicitor, to make it possible. Resolution is something you've seen before, and it operates much like previous resolutions, uh, in that these are general obligation bonds, it's taxed by a pledge of full credit tax regard to the school district. Again, that's what's translating, uh, the good credit rating of the district passes through as recognition by the, the rating service and to the benefit of the bondholder, uh, the assurance that they will be repaid. The, uh, mechanisms in place to refinance the bonds, both the two thousand seven bonds and the eight bonds, are in this resolution. Uh, the red necessary covenants under the local government in the debt act are in there. Uh, we have part of the discussions that have preceded this meeting regarding take advantage of the various tax laws that enable you, but ultimately translate into low interest rates, uh, may, enabling them to be what's so-called bank-qualified bonds. Uh, we, uh, we did a bond issue earlier this year, but we're still able to do one, uh, this year again, uh, by utilizing mathematics of, uh, the majority of this new bond issue and fitting in with what the tax laws allow for. So that's part of what's going into enabling those savings and the timing of the refinancing. But otherwise, uh, the mechanics of this bond issue will look very much like the previous bond issue, in terms of payment dates, the length, uh, and the operation of, of the repayments and so forth. I'll be happy to answer any questions in the head.
Are there any questions for Bond Council? None appearing. Thank you, Spurcell, will you call roll, please?
Mr. Armstrong.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bodger.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
I want to thank again Public Financial Management and Rhodes and Simon, who provided us so many decades of service and saved the taxpayers so many millions of dollars over the years. Another good effort, gentlemen, thank you very much. Keep on the lookout for some more. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
No.
Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? None appearing? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the minutes are approved. Uh, we'll now move on to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. As I noted in my written report, the enrollment is up about, uh, twenty students, uh, the last month since, uh, we had our board meeting. I also want to note that, again, this, Dr. McCarrick let me know that we're, just last week, carry into this week, we're, we see four more special ed students, three autistic support, and so very shortly, I may have to come back to you, um, and recommend that the, uh, takes on enrollment is a high possibility, you may have to hire another additional autistic support teacher, we're taking a look at those numbers, but, um, the trend is there, and, uh, we're up, uh, first time I can remember in a long time that high school has an uptick in enrollment, only five, but nonetheless, uh, things are turning around. Also want to remind the board that tomorrow, uh, we are receiving the last hundred thousand dollar payment from the Rodale Foundation for the, uh, nerf portion of paying for the all-weather track at the high school. We certainly want to thank the people of the Rodale Foundation who were involved in this, and special thanks goes to Bud Cuts. Uh, we'll be receiving that check tomorrow, and, uh, it's been fantastic working with Rodale, and more importantly, I think our, uh, our citizens have enjoyed using the track. Um, after much, uh, work with our architectural firm, Willow Lane, we're going to accept the LEED's Silver Award. We just don't have enough points to get us to the gold standard. Would have been nice, but, uh, the boards should understand that even if we had attained the gold standard, we would not have received additional funding over the, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars over ten years. Over ten years, so fifty-six thousand a year in additional, um, remuneration from the, uh, PD, so we're very happy. I think that was our target when, um, when we worked with our architect, um, to design Willow Lane, but again, just fell a couple points short of, of gold, but, unless, I think there's a lot to be proud of, our efforts. Uh, last week, we had, PD was in here conducting a special education audit, had a chance to debrief with, uh, the, uh, the head of the audit team along with Dr. McCarrick, and, you know, we're waiting the written report, which we'll get, uh, in a couple months from now, but, um, generally speaking, I was pleased with what, um, uh, the lead person had to say to us. I think, uh, a lot of credit goes out to Dr. McCarrick and her staff, and all the teachers and involved, who did a good job of maintaining our IDPs, taking sure our records. I certainly want to thank the parents who gave us willingly of their time to come in and meet with our special ed evaluators. In your packets, we gave you the, uh, copy of the National School Boards Association Technology Site brochure, this is now going out to educators all across the country. We're excitedly, uh, preparing for, uh, I think, this wonderful opportunity to put our district's, uh, technology talents on display. We've had a chance to talk to Troy Bash at the Da Vinci Center, very excited about the kind of evening we're gonna have there, and again, as board members, certainly mark your calendars, April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, there'll be opportunities for board members, uh, to come and interact with our guests as well, specifically on the night of April twenty-nine, twenty-eighth, at the Holiday specifically on the night of April 28th at the Holiday Inn and certainly April 29th at the Da Vinci Center. So, we're looking forward to a successful visit. And Mrs. Boyes and I have started to meet with local vendors and will certainly come back to the board with lots of people who are going to kindly contribute financial assistance so we don't have to tap in district funds to pay for such things as launches and reception at the Da Vinci Center. I want to let everyone know when we talk about reception at the Da Vinci Center, that certainly going to be alcohol-free. That will be an event of alcohol will be served. I just want to let the parents who spoke tonight know that we certainly take your input seriously and we will be working with key members of our team moving forward and listening to parents and trying to deal with issues they develop. One of the things that I think we need to do tomorrow is have a conversation with the engineer who complied, who finished the study. We were certainly impressed with his efforts and maybe need a little clarification. On his part, we'll do that. We've also, from the meeting that was held in '27, we have a list of what we thought were parental concerns. We'll add to those tonight and we've shared those already with Mr. Fosselman. And we will continue to have conversations with the township personnel as well. I'm going to ask Mr. Lancy to talk about transportation study. As I mentioned last year, in our budget preparation last year, we talked that we will be looking at transportation from top to bottom. And I certainly want to share with the board how we're going to go about doing that. And so, I'm going to ask Mr. Lancy just to share with you the outline and give you our projected time for completing our reports. Mr. Lancy, maybe you can just take people through the salient points of the proposed study.
Thank you. We have three major goals with this transportation study. First is to examine all issues relative to East Penn School District transportation to make us a more efficient operation. Number two is to develop a listing of key transportation information and data. And three is to identify areas that may lead to savings of transportation costs. And what we're going to do in order is do a recent history. That will be all the data that we have this year and the last three years, contracted services cost. And that will include our major contractor as well as parents, summary of pupil transported. And we're going to look at our public school students, non-public school students, students transported due to hazardous walking, number of non-reversible students transported on contract, number of charter school students transported outside of East Penn, number of charter school students transported inside of East Penn. Our second section will be special education transportation. We have special education operated routes. We've got to include the number of students and the cost. We also have intermediate unit operated routes, and that will be number of students and costs. Section three of the study will be number of district routes over the last three years and including this year for elementary, middle, high school, non-public, and charter schools. Section four will be review of hazardous roads list. Section five will be utilization percentages of our large buses, the 72-passenger buses, and our smaller buses, the 48-passenger buses. Section six will be an update on implementation of Versatran software, which we put in to help us with this process. So, we expect to get better reports and clearer information out of the Versatran software than we could out of the EdgeLock software. So, we're looking forward to using our new software through this study. Section seven, update on the status of the contract with first student. Section eight, use of district-owned vans. And that will include the description of the uses of the vans, the mileage that we're putting on the vans, and the fiscal analysis on whether it would be cheaper to try to contract those out or continue to use those. And if it's actually financially advantageous, maybe add some more payments. So, that would be at the end of that analysis. Section nine, cost estimates of transporting all elementary students within the 1.5-mile guideline. Section 10, shared services agreement strategies with local school districts. Section 11, section on all cost estimates associated with proposed Willow Lane changes. And that will include route saving analysis as well as site improvement cost estimates. The last section will be recommendations for board consideration. And then we're going to have the appendix in the report listing the hazardous roads in our district. We expect to have this information together and reviewed and distributed to the board by February 7th. And we will have a presentation at the public board meeting in February 11th. And we have any questions for the board.
Any questions for Mr. Lancy? Mr. Rose? Just so I keep this clear for myself, we're going to do this totally in-house?
Yes.
Okay. Have we done one of these before in-house?
We have. I went through it in-house unless I had all the, all where we thought. We checked with first student. We had the information. It's going to take a little bit of time to put together some things, but give you an example. My last district I operated, I had 12,000 students and 160 buses a day. We had an outside firm do that. Here, I think we're, I think, based on the fact that we have some good people working in the department, Mrs. Evans, and we have the data, I feel pretty comfortable in getting this done in-house instead of asking a consultant.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Seidenberger.
I was just going to add a couple of things to Mr. Lancy's report. You know, last year, when we brought this up, you know, we'll be looking at all our schools. We're not just looking at Willow Lane. I think parents should understand that. One of the things we're going to take a close look at, number of students who are transported that we receive no state reimbursement for. And I'm not going to say it's an automatic, but we're certainly going to look at that. We need to understand why that's happening and are there solutions that we could apply to that situation. The other thing, we're very excited about Versatran, both Mr. Lancy and I have used Versatran. I've used Versatran at Avon Grove, our superintendent, and Brick. We installed that. And I think we're going to use that in Springfield. One thing we're excited about as the township may be facing another, I guess, another round of developments, having a program such as Versatran will allow us to get in front of those developments and start to anticipate what transportation is going to be having. And we certainly did not have that ability with EdgeLock. So, we're very happy that first student agreed to purchase. The other thing I'm going to probably do, I can't say for certain, but right now, I'm certainly thinking the corporate headquarters for first student is located in Cincinnati. And I've said for a couple of years, as you know, my son works in Cincinnati. So, I'm looking at January 8th as a potential day. Let me just pay a call on the corporate, corporate people, first student. And certainly, a lot of conversations that we want to have with the people at the top. We've had, as you know, we've had multiple conversations with first student here on site. And I think it's probably a good time to add that conversation because one of the things we're really, we want to remind you about is that next year will be the fourth year of a five-year contract. And so, we'll be gearing up for another rebid. And we're going to add to our report some of the more salient things we think are very important in this contract. We'll be forward. So, I think we'll be a little better positioned to understand as a board what goes into a busing contract. And I don't know if we spent that much time on the last time. I certainly want the board members to understand that no license that goes into a busing contract.
Mrs. Donches?
Yes, in light of some of the parent comments this evening, if it would not be too much trouble, would it be possible to, in section nine, at the cost estimate of transporting the students within the 1.75, the three-quarter mile, reducing that radius if the software could do that? Just to, just in case for the future if the community, you know, or whatever.
Is that Ms. Donches?
Yeah.
Ms. Hyde?
I just have a few things. I'm very happy we're doing this because I voiced my concern before on how buses were coming, especially to the high school, either empty sometimes or two or three students in it. And I know that one of the speakers about Willow Lane currently brought up that it's messy as it is with the buses and the parent drivers. I was wondering if we're going to ask why parents constantly have to drop off their kids or pick them up? I understand certain times, doctor's appointments, et cetera. I'm just curious why they're not taking the bus if we're providing it as taxpayers for supporting this? So, I don't know if that's something that we're looking into.
Well, I think so. We've talked affirmatively about doing some surveys, so that certainly doesn't suggest it's unsurprising. That might be something we talk about is how do we get data? And I think, talking to Dr. Warren, I think, just observing last year, certainly think there's a high number of parents that transport their kids now. But we don't know what the threshold is. We're certainly going to take a look at it. So, I want parents to understand this is something we've been looking at for a long time. This is a Johnny come lately kind of operation. We've been doing this the better part of the year now. But nonetheless, we'll take some suggestions. We certainly want to work with parents. And I can honestly say there'll be a follow-up committee, parent representation.
Thank you.
And again, I certainly want to thank Bruce Fosselman and the folks at the township. They've been wonderful. And I want to say publicly that they do have $85,000 worth of signage in their budget. And so, we'll certainly work with the engineer and see exactly, and we'll be able to report back as to specific what recommendations are going to be implemented. But as I said, that's a significant amount of signage. And one, if you remember last summer, it's one of the reasons why we postponed last year because we had such a good relationship with the township. And we all agreed that when we thought about this, our intent was to make sure that Willow Lane had similar signage to West Losville, higher at Lower MacIntyre High School. And that was one of the things that Bruce agreed to and the township agreed to. So, we're happy as a company. Very much.
Yes. And just one more thing. I know that when I went to school here with the non-public students, a lot of times they had busing with the public students. And then they would usually meet at the high school and then get rebussed. Is that how it's still working?
We do a little of that right now at GO Tech. But I can't say that we do, only because the non-public and charter school routes are a little elongated. But certainly, we want to take a look at, for instance, I'm curious to sit down with people of first student and look at the new performing arts school in Solter, you know, and not, and I certainly don't want to anger at parents from several generations, but are there, can we start taking a look at Versatran and run some potential routes that may have kids from those two schools traveling together or even saying names? And so many other things. You know, we hear a lot of rumors about certain kids getting transportation that shouldn't be transported. So, we're going to go back in and just about look at every one of those routes to make sure that nobody's getting advantage. And we get calls all the time. You have to understand that. We get calls all the time. Well, you shouldn't be transporting this kid. Skip it. The parent dropped the car here. Get off. So, we're going to take a look at all of that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify when we talked about the signage being in Lower MacIntyre Township's budget, it's because it's the responsibility under law of that governmental entity to put signage on their road. We cannot put the signage up. They have to put it up. And they are, I believe, required by law to contract for the signage or acquire it and put it up. The only way that we would end up paying for is if there was some kind of a development plan where when we proposed the school, they put that as a condition of use. Am I right there?
We don't do traffic signs. The only time, and I certainly wasn't here at Willow Lane when all the approvals were agreed upon, in my last district where I, well, at Avon Grove, we built an intermediate school, the board shared it at the cost of the traffic lights there. But my understanding was the traffic study didn't warrant a traffic lights at that point. That would be the only time where you would have an agreement and maybe both entities might chip in for that. Those kind of things, again, we start to separate. We'll be happy to share that with the board and parents that some of the issues that were brought up here tonight fall squarely in the responsibility of township. Some are jointly in some other district. And what we'll do that is separate those into four categories. And some are even law enforcement. So, I guess there's actually four categories that we're looking at.
Because I know in our neighborhood, we've had problems on a fairly regular basis with drivers passing a school bus with its lights flashing. And since it happens on a regular basis, people complain, I live in the borough of MacIntyre, they complained to the police department. And on a fairly regular basis, there's a police car parked there facing the bus stop. And it discourages people from illegally passing the bus. It's amazing how effective the law enforcement presence is in getting people to actually obey the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I would like to see if the title of section nine amended a little bit. It isn't a one-and-a-half-mile guideline. It's a one-and-a-half-mile limit for state reimbursement. State does not reimburse the district anything, although it doesn't reimburse the full cost, but it doesn't reimburse anything for anybody transported within one-and-a-half miles. And we need to make that fairly clear. Also, in regard to Ms. Hyde's comments about the buses being empty, we have a problem and it still hasn't been legally sorted out in Pennsylvania. If we provide busing, we have to provide busing for all the possible students. We can't make them ride the bus and we can't make their parents take them to school. So, there's a problem there. And some districts have been trying to look at some kind of legal agreement that they'd send to the parents and say, you know, sign up and we will not allocate a bus spot for your student. But it's still not settled in Pennsylvania law whether that will actually work or not. So, we have some legal problems that we may have to work around in trying to look at some of these bus issues. And I have also been lobbied by a very local lobbyist, that's all I'll say, to have the district consider options such as one large bus stop for an entire subdivision type of thing if we need to do routes. So, I would ask that in addition to the, looking at the three-quarter mile cost and recommendation, we look at single bus stops for subdivisions, things like that. That's other options. Although I will point out that if we start into numbers that don't go along with the state reimbursement type limits, we may have problems with some of our other areas where we don't currently have buses. So, we'll have to look at that very carefully. Any other questions or comments? All right, let us go on to item two personnel. I just have, oh, you want?
I have one more item. Let's switch that. Biggest news tonight, I'm sorry, I just have one more item. Mr. Lancy and Mrs. Surtival and I have spent, and Mr. Frank, a lot of time over the last month. And I'm feeling, you know, we're very happy to get additional, reducing of our debt service tonight with the bond refinancing. But nonetheless, we've taken a long hard look at our budget and I'm pleased, at least tonight, to tell you that we're not going to be coming to the board and asking for resolutions to ask us to seek exceptions. I think this year, our intent will be to stay, the maximum will be within the index. We'll give you a revised timeline. We've made a lot of internal adjustments and I'm not going to go through a long-winded presentation tonight. You know what that means. But we're very happy at this point. We think it's appropriate move. We have something to do with the budget. Our goal is certainly to maintain all of our programs. We're going to see what we want. The only thing I'll tell you that I said last year is our concern about special ed population. For some reason, I think it's a testimony to our great program, to be honest with you. But that's why I'm going to ask the board one favor this year. Instead of, you know, last year, I've asked for looking at lobbying.
Instead of, you know, last year I've asked for looking at lobbying, let's get off the cyber charter school, enough people are doing that. I think we need to really get behind Pat Brown and do something for special ed funding on this year. Maybe that'd be our joint cause issue, lay on the legislatures to look at, fair special ed funding. Now, Ms. Don.
Okay, I'll also point out that in that regard, then we have to pass a resolution on the first meeting of January saying that you're not going for exceptions. So I'll have to check the timing on that one to make sure we have the right number of days ahead of the required deadline. If not, we'll have to figure something else out. I just want to make sure we don't have to call a special meeting to pass that resolution on the correct timetable because when we get in that first week of January, that's about the time where the deadline runs out. Where I think it's ninety days prior to the election in May. I'm trying to remember the exact wording of that one, but we need to have the staff check that out and make sure that we have enough time for that to next meeting to pass that resolution.
Mr. Bailey?
Just in response to Dr. Seidberger's comment, very glad to hear that. We have to have a special meeting, I'll be more than happy to attend to put that into stone, so to speak, but I would ask Dr. Seidberger that in view of these parents' concerns, at least consider finding sixty thousand dollars to keep busing for another year until we have this all lined up, I know, but I'll leave that to your judgment. I heard you say that you were considering a committee with parental involvement, is that including Willow Lane Development?
Of course.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, let me put it that way. We just found, you know, another three hundred or so thousand tonight and looks like we might have the sixty thousand to do that. Thank you.
Well, I'll make my usual comment that those are one-time funds and don't necessarily mean any revenue stream.
Well, we'll have to be extending it for one year, it's a one-time use.
Let's move on to item two personnel, including the addendum. Can I have a motion, please?
Okay.
Have a second? All right, is there any discussion on item six point two? Not appearing, Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano.
Aye.
Mr. Bogner.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Don and I.
Item nine point three, and then to the two thousand thirteen, twelve thirteen school calendar.
Some move.
Dr. Seidberger?
The only change we've made since I talked to you last about this was, it was kind of foolish to keep February fourteenth as a, as an act day to day, which is in essence a half day for students to bring their back from a whole day. So with the cooperation of Mr. Piverato and Mrs. Sefi, and I'm sure our high school and middle school students will be extremely ecstatic about that. I don't hear, I don't think in any sense any students will be complaining about that. So that's the only change we're make, we're going to make. I think this, number one, we're needs to know that, and the public for that matter, we really work closely together, the schools in the high county, especially for LCPI. And so this is probably a joint effort, maybe some nuances with some other districts, but this is basically what everyone else is doing, putting in these two days, which is the Friday before President's Weekend and then what's commonly known as all the day.
Ms. Donchus?
I have objection to this. I did want to mention that a parent expressed concern because there were a couple of school trips planned, but I guess I'll just go after this one.
We do know like the high school physics class would be going to Orlando, so they're just kind of to work with the staff to make those accommodations and it's a lot of those things.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, a lot of those lines, whenever our students go on a school-sponsored trip, it's, the students' responsibility to work with their teachers, get the assignments in advance and make up those assignments, either turn them in early or make arrangements to turn them in late and then to either take early or take afterwards any quizzes or tests. So my children have had to navigate that on a number of occasions, one of them will have to navigate it here. It's something we're used to doing.
Mr. Stoltz?
Just thought it was worth commenting that almost every time we have one of these calendars, calendar changes, some parent or other comes up and says, you know, "Mr. Stoltz, I have this problem with it," or "That, I have heard nothing this time." So good job on the part of the administration.
That's today. When the calendar gets published tomorrow will be a different day.
Yeah, I'll let you know in a couple of weeks if I hear anything.
I'm sure you will. Love hearing you.
You always do.
I love you.
Put a rain on this earth.
Are there any other questions or comments on this particular issue? Not appearing, Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pollicano.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Bogner.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Don and I.
All right, the next item is the Amaz High School Program of Studies.
Can we ask Mr. Piverato, the staff, maybe come up and handle the next three items?
Okay. First, let's get a motion on the table for the Program of Studies.
Some of them.
Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Piverato, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, happy holidays. In front of you while you have a copy of the changes that we're proposing for the Program of Studies, the thirteen, fourteen school year, and I don't feel the need to go through each change with you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did want to point out a few things as we move forward. Most of the changes, which are quite minor, are due to language that was included as we continue to align our curriculum to the common core and as we begin the administration of keystone. So you'll see that throughout the Program of Studies. Moving to the first page, page one, you'll notice that we are combining four of our art courses and reducing them to a total of two. The art department felt that was important to do to help clarify some of the prerequisites students needed to take and to clear up some confusion for the students who weren't sure which courses they needed to take. So they felt it's best if we take all of the 2D and combine it in one course and all of the 3D and combine it with a second course, the students will take one 2D and one 3D before moving on to the next level of art course. Turning to page two, with us this evening, we have one of our computer science teachers, Mrs. Blackstone, she wanted me to point out at this time that this is Computer Science Education Week. She's very proud of that. She had a nice presentation, open house on Thursday evening of last week for parent-teacher conferences, that were well-attended, so we appreciate that. Changes moving forward that Mrs. Blackstone has proposed and we agree with is changing the Computer Science Foundations course and eliminating some of the office package that was being taught to students in the past because now we're teaching in other courses and supplying it with more programming-type information. And so if you look at the third bullet, you can see the three types of program environments that Mrs. Blackstone and her colleagues will now be teaching. Text-based, GUI interface, and drag-and-drop, as opposed to some of the Windows-based environment. Moving to page three, a course that's been on the books but has not been run over the last several years because of lack of enrollment, C++. We're converting from a four-year course to a semester and keeping up with current trends, we're looking for the course to be more graphics-based and you see the description there. So we believe that this will be a more attractive course to students because it's more in line with what's happening now in industry and also we're hoping it'll be more attractive to female students. And you see a rationale for that there as well. Fast forwarding to page six, we had to work on the names of our math courses at the high school because of some recent changes to the curriculum. Algebra is being taught both at the middle school and the high school now. This is a decision that was made a year or so ago by the two math departments and the administration at the high school and the middle school as well as central office. The beginning, what we were calling Algebra One A, is being taught at the middle school, which provided a need, then presented a need for Algebra One B. We, we're not crazy about the name Algebra One B. And so without changing the content of the course, we are now proposing that what would have been called Algebra One B is instead called Algebra One College Prep. We have two exceptions to that. Turning to page seven, students who take Algebra One A at the middle school level and may not do as well as they had hoped or may be struggling, we will propose that they move into Algebra One instead of Algebra One CP. That course will move at a pace that's appropriate for them. It will reinforce some concepts in Algebra One A as well as ultimately moving on to Algebra One B. Students of both of those courses, Algebra One CP and Algebra One, will be taking keystones at the completion of that course. And finally, in algebra, we also have a need for students who do not go through our middle school program and come to us as ninth graders. And obviously, if they've not taken Algebra One A at the middle school, they would have missed half the course. And so you see on page seven, course number three oh six T is designed for those students to transfer in, have not had algebra, will have a full year of algebra at the high school, will remain on grade level, and will be ready for the keystones at the conclusion of the Move to page twelve. Because the keystones now are required of all students and all students have to take biology keystone, obviously all students at the high school level will have to take the biology course. In the past, students could take integrated science in ninth grade and move on to chemistry at the tenth grade level. Moving forward, that's no longer true. Students will have to take biology. The majority of students who are on grade level will take it in ninth grade and will take the keystone at the conclusion. Those students who are not quite ready for biology yet, coming out of eighth grade, will go into integrated science. And the focus of that course will change slightly to provide students with a review in terms of their abilities and their preparation for biology. And they will then move into a biology class or course rather than tenth grade. So at the conclusion of tenth grade, all students will have taken biology at the high school level and all students will have taken the keystone exam for biology. Anybody have any questions about any of that, Ken?
Are there any questions for Mr. Piverato on any of that? You. I have to just hand out one correction. Mr. Barker, thank you for bringing this to our attention, by the way. We did have one mistake on the document. Any more? If you look at the page that I just handed to you as it's coming around.
The language in the green block, because of cutting and pasting, we had made an error, so we cleaned up the language in the green block for course four hundred, biology won't apply. So that is now as it will appear. We wanted to include for both science and our English course, as we did in Algebra One, however, a statement at the end of each course description that just clearly states students will be taking the keystone at the completion of that course. So you see the additional statement there for science and biology as well as the additional statement for English. Students will take the literature keystone at the end of the conclusion of tenth grade English and biology and algebra, obviously they'll take at the conclusion of that course or those courses.
Mr. Piverato?
Yes?
What is your feeling on putting in a statement that indicates the importance to graduation of the keystone exam, along with this statement that they have to take it?
I'm open to that. Obviously, by the year two thousand seventeen, all students, our current eighth graders, will be required to pass a keystone for graduation, so it's a great suggestion, thank you.
I think we should include that because we have had some problems in the past with some of these tests that people didn't believe were important. Although they are always important to the school district, they may not be important to parents and students and so I think we certainly need to bring up the awareness level. Agreed, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Piverato or do you have an order to go on?
No, that's it for the changes to Program of Studies.
Finished Program of Studies, any more questions on that particularly?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, there's something else. There's a microphone pack.
This, the graduation requirement isn't there for state assessment in the Program of Study already, but we have also listed the Program of Study on page two of the current Program of Study, that is not what we've intended to do, this is last year's. We also have a statement in there about keystone exams and the knowledge that we had last year. So we could revise that a little bit, but we also have been discussing the graduation requirement for the state testing that's in there now and that, so it has been in there, I guess is what I wanted to point out.
Well, my concern is that wherever the word keystone appears, we should put that there because somebody may gloss over the initial discussion, but just simply looking at course descriptions and we should emphasize it there also, just to make sure people understand.
Understood.
Ms. Donchus?
What are the budgetary impacts of all these changes?
We don't anticipate any budgetary impacts of any of the changes. Our staffing decisions are made in conjunction with Dr. Seidberger and Dr. Fuller after we do course sign-ups, student sign-ups when we do townies. And, you know, we staff our courses based on the teachers that we have in the building in conjunction with Dr. Seidberger. So to my knowledge, I don't see any need.
And has this been, other than, did it just get posted Thursday night for everybody to see or has it been posted somewhere else in the school so that other, the community and the public have been able to see these changes?
The proposed changes have not been posted anywhere at this time.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Bogner.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donchus.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Don and I.
All right, now we have the Amaz High School Comprehensive Plan, can I have a motion, please?
Some of them.
All right, Mr. Piverato?
As a result of not meeting AYP this past year, Amaz High School had to prepare and submit to the state a comprehensive plan, which is a strategic plan designed to address the issues that held us back from reaching AYP and to put a one-to-two-year plan moving forward to address some of those issues. Again, all of you have a copy of that. I had not planned on presenting that information to you tonight, I had planned to answer any questions because you had the information ahead of time. I'd be happy to do either.
And this is a requirement of no child left behind and because of the subgroup that was not able to make AYP, Amaz High School, as I recall.
There are three items, actually. The first one is there are two different subgroups that did not make AYP based on graduation rate. They were our Spanish students and our economic disadvantage. We also did not make AYP school-wide because of our math performance. AYP targets continue to move up. In our case, our performance continued to move in that same direction except for this one, this one year, in which we declined a little bit. But even without that decline, as targets continue to move, we need to continue to change what we're doing in a high school, a high school to try to keep pace.
Questions from Mr. Piverato, Mr. Barker?
There were targets for the mathematics proficiency improvements, but not for the graduation rates in the two subgroups. Do you have those targets?
We do, thank you. And if you turn to page seventeen, you'll see what Mr. Barker was talking about. Again, thank you, Mr. Barker. was talking about. Again, thank you, Mr. Barker, for your questions ahead of time. The graduation rate target is the last statement there on page nineteen. And we have the same target for all students, and that is nine percent. The state requires eighty-five percent. This past year, our Hispanic rate was sixty-seven point four. The state requires eighty-five. Our target will be ninety for all students. Our economically disadvantage was at, we're at eighty-two percent. Again, the state requires eighty-five. Our target for all students will be ninety percent.
And do you know, um, for subjects that didn't meet the targets, do you have a frame of analysis of the key reasons why they don't?
We don't at this time. And as you saw in the plan, I'm sure we're looking to put some teams together to study that data, to identify who those students were and are and to use a dropout survey moving forward to try to gather some of that information as well. Are you done, Mr. Barker?
Um, I just had another question. CBT testing, what is that?
Hush diagnostic testing.
Another internal test?
They are the, yes. Ms. Donchus?
I just had the same question. Again, what is the budgetary impact? I noticed that under something called study, I am with the needs to be focused and looking at that maybe, what is happening?
I'll, I'll talk about that. I'll handle that. Uh, Mr. Pfefferado, I have talked about it. I think our budgetary situation is pretty positive. So we're going to go ahead and purchase that now.
Uh, this year?
This year.
And are we using study item anywhere else?
Yes, we are. The elementary program, and I'm sure once the middle school hears that we're going to be buying it for the high school, they'll be right behind. So I think, um, we'll work, Mrs. Campbell, there's a discount right now on that product.
So it must be really effective?
It is. And we've used it for many years in the elementary program. It's, it's really one of the best products on the market. Allows us to teach some, um, topics and allows them to keep a record of kids' progress. So it's pretty common, pretty, uh, pretty good tool.
Uh, Mr. Stolz?
Just wanted to comment on, about the program itself. Might just say further for No Child Left Behind. I mean, a- as I've said before, anything that George W. Bush and the late Senator Ted Kennedy agreed on couldn't possibly be a good idea. And I think further proof of this is that a federal law, which is supposedly from the federal government, that is supposed to unite and represent us all is breaking us down by economic class and racial subgroup. It's, it's wrong. It's disgusting. And we have to comply with it regardless.
Thank you, Mr. Stolz. Mr. Earnshaw?
The targets for two thousand thirteen of ninety-one percent proficient or advanced proficient in reading and eighty-nine percent proficient or advanced proficient in math. I believe those are the, the percentages set by the state and the state's implementation of No Child Left Behind. And then for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, if I remember correctly, those numbers, those targets rise to one hundred percent.
Correct, right.
Yeah. So I have, I long maintain that one hundred percent is unachievable in any district with a special education population of any size. It's unfortunate truth. My, uh, seventh grade daughter doesn't talk much. She doesn't read. She can't do math. It's just a, a result of her condition. To expect her to be able to be proficient in reading at a seventh grade level and math at a seventh grade level is a violation of the IDE, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It's, uh, it's, my fervent hope that we will have sanity break out in Washington and they will get around to revisiting this law, which has been something they've been talking about, doing for about five years, I think. And, uh, maybe they'll, they'll realize that these targets are unachievable except in very limited circumstances. And we hopefully will have some legislative relief at some point. But maybe it's a main hope.
Don't count on it. They've been sitting on that bill for two years now. And, uh, it is my understanding, though, that Secretary Tomalis has finally approached the federal government on waivers for some of these numbers.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pfefferado? Now appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Pollicano?
Aye.
Mr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. We now have the update on the book challenge. Thank you. Um, as you all are aware, several months back, we had a, two parents who expressed, who expressed concern about two books on the summer reading list at the high school, the electric kool aid acid test and the book Prep. I had an opportunity to meet with the parent who actually issued the challenge. And between that meeting and numerous follow-up communications with the parent and with our English department, we believe we've come to not just a resolution and she's willing to put aside the challenge, but also we believe we've made some improvements to the process. And I'd like to spend just a few minutes sharing those improvements with the U.S. Board. Uh, we agreed that the, the reading list, summer reading list, should not be stagnant or static and should be reviewed on an annual basis to not only determine from the teacher's perspective as to whether or not they're getting the type of work from students on, from each particular book, but more importantly, whether students are picking the books on the list and how often they're being used. So we agreed that that list will be reviewed each year and those books that are either not providing the work that the teachers asked for or not being used will be cycled off for that reason and any other reason. Specifically, two books that were mentioned in the challenge, the electric kool aid acid test will no longer be on the reading list. This is a, a result of the English department moving away from, um, nonfiction on their summer reading list. Part of the common core requires them to do more nonfiction in the classroom. And so their summer reading list moving forward will be only of fiction. The good news is that our social studies department is very interested in picking up the nonfiction piece and doing a summer reading assignment, having their students do a summer reading assignment of nonfiction moving forward. So as a result, that book will come off the reading list. The book Prep, um, it was agreed that, um, that book should be moved up in terms of grade level, that the subject matter may be mature, too mature for eighth graders moving into ninth grade. And so at the suggestion of our English Department Chair, Mrs. Dedana, we moved that book up to the AP twelfth grade reading list. It will now be contained in what's called a teacher book bag, which is, um, an area where students can go in and pick books by choice. And so again, no student will be required to read that book. Uh, we also agreed that some of the warnings for the books with mature content needed to be a little stronger. So we're reworking the language for some of those warnings. And lastly, that, um, the reading list itself and those warnings need to be more readily available. Right now, in order to find the reading list, you need to go onto the curriculum page of the high school website. And, um, it's a little bit more difficult to find. And so what I agreed to do is in the future, meaning the school year, when those reading lists come out, not only will we alert parents to the reading list being out via e-news alert and via Edulip, our call-out system, and then you can hear my voice on a regular basis. Uh, we'll also include in the newsletter, but we will include a link on the front page of the high school website. So parents can click through the reading list and review it with their children and make an informed decision about what book they want their child to read for the summer reading list. And so with all of those improvements, we feel like, like the, um, the reading list is, is, uh, hasn't moved forward. And we appreciate the cooperation and collaboration, not just by the English department, but by our community members who reached out to me. So I wanted to let you know that that's resolved at this time.
And that's in accordance with our procedure, which allows for that first stage to be a, uh, negotiation effort?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, now it's started. Any questions, Mr. Stolz?
I, uh, somebody brought up a resolution on this before. I'm glad to hear that it was resolved. I'm fully satisfied with the result. I had some concerns, obviously, with some of these strong content they're looking at. I realize it's not required, but I move that the Eastland School Board of Directors approve the recommendation of Mr. Pfefferado on the book challenge issue.
I'll raise a point of war, Mr. Ballard. Since there is no requirement for the school board to be involved, that would be a violation of our, of our policy and guidelines. Also, we, as, as the person who made the motion and the person who made the second have made repeated comments about the need for transparency. If this is truly something that the board should address, it should be on an agenda for a future meeting, not brought up. I'll just for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw.
That does bring up a problem, which I will have to discuss for a moment with solicitor. All right. According to our policy and according to the solicitor, the issue only comes to the board itself as a, uh, voteable issue if the, uh, if there is a situation where the controversy is not resolved. So at this point in time, I'll have to rule that in proper motion. I agree with the outcome, so I'm not going to challenge the ruling of the chair on this.
Mr. Pfefferado, thank you for the federal report. Are your books still available in the high school library?
They are due.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Donchus?
I have definitely some requirements. Would we, I think the person that submitted, uh, the policy request or the request for the challenge? We're not the same people that initially brought the question to the podium. Some would, will they receive an answer? If I bet or, or how will they be notified?
Well, no official challenge was generated, so we have nothing to respond to. Yes, except maybe, uh, there's another one challenge. There was one, it was one challenge. But the other people who came before the board, Dr. Seiberg, would you feel comfortable sending them a?
I'll have to follow that.
Sending a letter saying that that's, this is what's occurred?
May I point out, we have three members of the press here. And I'm quite sure they will report.
I'm sure, but just, just for, uh, community, uh, consciousness and involvement, since they did make the presentation, we normally have some kind of response for people who make presentations, one way or another, contacting them. But I think this would be fair. Ms. Donchus, go ahead.
But then they ask the very specific questions that they wanted answered, like how did their books get there to begin with and who was responsible and so forth.
I'm not sure we can get into that without a formal challenge because that would involve a committee report.
I see some they would have to tell, to tell them that they answered the question.
And since they're not there and there's nothing to challenge, I think that's possibly the, Mr. Barker?
I believe that information has been discussed, uh, going through the policy. It clearly describes how the books are chosen, how they are challenged and so that has been discussed in the uniform, we can call it. So, I mean, if they do want to include that additionally in the letter, that's fine, but to say that we haven't answered questions and if we have discussed in an open meeting.
I think the resolution is quite fine. And I appreciate all the work that you did and, um, the community input and so forth is important. And, um, I just thought I would just kind of thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donchus. Any other questions for Mr. Pfefferado on this issue? Now appearing, thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. Uh, we now have the American Red Cross Provider Agreement, exhibit fourteen. Can I have a motion, please? Second. Any discussion on this thing? Now appearing, oops, inside.
Uh, is this something new? Is this a new mandate? It's something we've done in the past?
It's done in the past.
We've done in the past. This is, that's still, okay, great, thanks.
There also have been some new requirements from state. I'm having CPR call my people in this building at all times. So that adds to the number of people we might have had training.
Okay. Thank you.
Another unfunded mandate I'll give.
Uh, Ms. Bertschel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye.
Ms. Horry?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller? Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay. Under, uh, legislative, I did want to bring up, uh, two things. One, the legislature has not been able to, so nothing bad can happen. And, uh, although there are people floating all kinds of trial balloons for next year, such as reapportionment of delegates for the, uh, election, uh, the, for the, uh, college electors and electoral college and other such things, which we'll probably hear about when the silly season starts in January. And, uh, the other thing is, I, I did want to mention that although we are giving the Keystone exams and the schools at this moment officially, usage of the Keystone exams for AYP target determination has not yet been approved by the federal government. As you will recall, just a few weeks ago, just before Thanksgiving, um, the Department of Education's attempt to rejigger the charter schools, AYP, was rejected by the federal government. So they're going to have to go back in January and give, uh, honest numbers for the AYP. And, and it is not entirely impossible that there might be a problem with the Keystone exams yet. And yet we're still required to give them, even though they, they didn't follow the law to get approval of them. So I do, do point that out, that, uh, with apologies to our parents and our students, we may be giving you an exam that may or may not count. And so, uh, I would, uh, be watching that very, very carefully because that will cause all kinds of additional costs and confusion by trying to do something ahead of getting it legally approved. Uh, that's about all I have right now for legislative. Are there any questions? Okay. Now appearing, we'll move on to other educational entities.
Mr. Barker?
There were some, uh, recommendations from a House committee on taxation and some of them, I think also the charter school. Is there any, uh, special education reimbursement?
There's nothing moving in that because such an essentially into an.
That's basically.
All they're going to do is congratulate each other on either being elected or retiring. And that's about all it's going to look at, uh, for, for the end of the year.
Mr. Stolz?
Now that all of the election results across the state are known throughout the legislature, do you have any comment about what that may or may not do for or against education concession?
Well, um, I, the only thing I can tell you is the, the comment that Dr. Terry Madana made is not much changed. Nobody changed any control of the two bodies. Some of the margin is a little narrower in the state, but there are some indications that people are spooked about the educational issues because, uh, there was some talk about that during the election campaign. Other than that, um, it's the same old, same old right at the moment. And we'll have to see how it progresses from here.
All right. Let's, uh, move on to other educational entities. Harvard Lehigh intermediate unit, Ms. Fuller?
Thank you. Uh, at the last board meeting, we took a, a preliminary look at the two thousand thirteen, twenty fourteen proposed general operating budget. As Mr. Rich Wyon said, there are many budgets at CLIU. But this is the, I'm going to call it the back of the spine, the budget that helps the, the, um, that allows CLIU to operate. And, uh, other budgets are involved with services rendered. But this, uh, this budget is based on weighted average daily membership support. Overall, they're proposing a very modest one percent increase, which comes out to, uh, four hundred and eleven dollars for our school visit. So they are trying their very, very best to contain costs, are working prodigiously with superintendents and business managers to continue to provide excellent services while also containing costs. And, uh, I think we get a very good return for our investment in these services.
Are there any questions, Ms. Fuller? What's your take? Ah, rotten cold.
All right, we'll go on to Lehigh Career and Technical Institute, Ms. Hyde, would you have a report?
I have a small one. Our last meeting, as a joint operating committee, was actually way back in October 24th. And I want to bring up a few things from that meeting, is I really like how they're doing their performance goals and measures this time around, they have 11, and it is very evidence-based, so I definitely commend LCTI on that. And also, please check out the new improvements on the website, and I think it's, our students go there and support them, check it out, I would appreciate that. And I did not make the meeting of the whole on November 19th, if anybody wants to chime in from that, that was a budget discussion meeting, and it was the week before, it was the week of Thanksgiving, and I wasn't able to attend, if anyone else to talk, did one?
Anyone else attended?
It coincided with the CLIU meeting, so I was able to attend. However, if I can prove that the executive director sent an email today that the Secretary of Education, the Secretary of Education will be visiting LCTI in January, I think. Is it 15? Well, a pending date in January. I think it seems safe.
Any questions for Ms. Hyde? Nonappearing, we'll move on to business operations. Does anyone have any objections to combining items 1, 4? Mr. Stoltz?
You could just put on, right, two separate.
All right, with the exception of item 2, items 1, 3, and 4, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on items 1, 3, and 4? Ms. Donches?
If this is sort of what we have for numbers here, I'm sorry, I just didn't have time to send them in ahead of time, I had a question on one of the checks.
Can you give us the page and check number, please?
Page number 4, and the check is for $7,500 for premier agendas.
Printing and binding.
That's what the high school student planners. And do you know what account code that comes from? And then just some, I'll go on to your part, it's on page 2, for $356.40. That's for water for various counties in the district, for all the secondary, middle schools, and central offices. So are there multiple account codes for that?
Yes, there are.
Oh, I have to notice that the sheet that you're reading from has the check, the purpose, and the code. Would we be able to get that report? That's what I was interested in having in the head, put a motion in a while ago, if we could get that report.
It does not have the purpose, it just has the account number, and because I know the account number, I know generally what the purpose is.
So there isn't anything that combines them together?
No. And that was each invoice number, so, I mean, it's a very thick document, pretty full list.
Right. It's too bad that ideally both of those things are combined. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Burzl, will you call, roll, please, on items 1, 3, and 4?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollakano.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, item 2 is the amended 403D plan, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All right, discussion? Ms. Stoltz?
I don't necessarily have any problem with this, I was just, I would like some more explanation from the administration before we vote on this, as with anything referring to pensions.
The IRS has required that we add language into the contracts, so our consulting group, TSA, who equals this 403D plan for us, has recommended that we add language in here specifically for HART, which is Heroes Earning Assistance Relief Act for military and active duty personnel, and for HUERA, which is Workers Retiree and Employee Recovery Act, which designated beneficiaries able to move money after the death of an holder of policy. And I can give you the specific changes and sections if you are interested.
Is this something that's legally required, if they sent us? Yes. Okay, that's, that's.
IRS is.
I just, I wanted to ask before we voted on it.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Just to clarify, a 403D plan is the government-sponsored equivalent of 401K plan, it's strictly the employees investing their after, their earnings on a pre-tax basis to shelter for income taxes.
And the IRS is requiring us to have these employees by January 1st.
Okay. Ms. Donches?
Is there a match? There isn't, okay.
This is strictly on, it's your optional, it's a void. Any other questions? Ms. Donches, is that a question or not?
Yes, I wondered about the date. Is it because it's amending that it's January 1st, 2012, and not then January 1st, 2013? On the agreement. On page 1, it says that it amends and states a previously established plan, the effective date of the amended plan is January 1st, 2012.
What the IRS is for?
Make a retroactive, make a retroactive for the full year.
Checking.
Anything else? Ms. Burzl, will you call, roll, please?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Pollakano.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Item number 5 is for information, notice that the total sum was $922.32 of the state, for the state, that's the impact of that item. Is there any new business that come for the Board tonight? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a brief note, I had the privilege of attending the high school band concert on Friday, I got off an airplane, and two hours later was sitting in the seat and enjoying the music of the band. They did an absolutely fantastic job, they are sounding better and better each year, well done to our students and to the faculty, so, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donches?
Yes, I wanted to say that I was really surprised last week when a citizen came before the Board and mentioned that she had seen the presentation about the walkability study at the Willow School on November 27th. And I'm really disappointed that board members weren't notified about the meeting, and to hear that it wasn't widely publicized within the school, and it's just very disturbing, because ever since Dr. Seidenberger mentioned that that meeting would be postponed to November, I paid close attention to the school district website, expecting an announcement, or at minimum, you know, I expected an announcement in his email update, as he did in August 1st, he'd been telling him update to announce the meeting for the Brandywine Walker, of the two walkers. And usually special presentations are reported at board meetings, so I'm just saying, I'm very disappointed that the Board wasn't notified, and that the meeting was poorly publicized, and too badly in response, lightly attended. And as you know, I did, maybe you don't know, but I did attend the session for the Brandywine Village Two Walkers, and it was really helpful to hear the information firsthand, and to hear what questions and concerns the parents had. And I understand the parents that did attend the November 27th meeting, a few mentioned that they were left with the impression that the school board members no longer want to participate in these meetings because of negative comments, or something along that line, and that my name was mentioned in connection with that comment, and I didn't appreciate that. I'm not sure about all my fellow board members, but I feel that if, even if negative comments are made during a meeting, that we are here elected, you know, to listen to all sides of the issue. And I think that citizens realize that official action can't be taken except during board meetings, and they know that one board member can't speak for the Board or take action on behalf of the Board, however, they do expect to be represented and listened to, and they deserve to be. So if there is a forum where I have the opportunity to listen to people's concerns firsthand, and if my schedule allows, I like to attend. And I hope the Board will be notified about the meetings to the Willow School walkers in the future. And I know you can say that, yes, they can come to the podium, and they can come to the meetings, and they do, and I see that a lot of people did tonight, but it's not a conversation, and they don't get answers, and not really required to get a letter, I guess. So, I just, I mean, I do believe that maybe along that line, as a board, we need to make some policy changes in this area, and I'll think of them and suggest them in the future. But obviously, there's still many concerns about the walking plans that has been set forth, and I would like to hear how those that are required this year are doing, you know, how many students are walking, is there increased car traffic because the parents are driving their children to school, how are the dismissals going, have there been days that rained or stormed that prevented the students from leaving the school, is the office inundated with phone calls, you know, maybe I have more questions than your parents do even, but I would like to hear a report so that we can make an informed decision talking about the new walkers. And, you know, a couple of parents mentioned to me that it was unfortunate that no one from the school board was present at that meeting, and I certainly agree, and, you know, as I said, I'm very disappointed. I'm encouraged by Dr. Seidenberger's note in this December 6th update that he is open to this community group, and as he mentioned tonight, and I think that is wonderful, and I look forward to that happening. And I did want to mention that. And I have a couple other things as well, Charles, no?
I think you're it, Ms. Donches.
All right, I wanted to thank Mr. James and the report on the checks, and I wondered, raised a question for me, like, what is the procedure when checks are voided? And in the future, would we have avoided checks listed on the summary so that it may not, it would, it wouldn't cause the confusion for the, you know, the confusion that was caused?
You said you had two things?
That was the question, I guess, like, if there's a procedure for voided checks. And I, if you want to, like, the next one, that's fine.
Is that it?
And then lastly, I know that policy has to be discussed in public, and I wanted to, I've been asked to send in items for agendas beforehand. So I did email Mr. Ballard, so I'm going to read this, I said, "A couple citizens have contacted me, there may be several people interested in Willow Lane busing, attending the meeting, I respectfully request that would be added as an item under new business." And I sent that to Mr. Ballard, and I copied Dr. Seidenberger and Ms. Burzl.
Did you happen to mention what date you did that?
That was on Thursday, December 6th.
Well, I didn't receive it on Thursday, December 6th, that was after the agenda had been put out.
So the request, or the reply I got on Friday, December 7th, was, Lynn, you can bring up the subject during the business if you wish, and see if the Board wishes to discuss it, but no motion can be discussed without adequate notice to all of the public who might want to comment on non-emergency matters to come before the Board. Having advanced notification of significant motions is also a fairness issue for members of the Board who are not privy to your intentions in advance. I would suggest that if you have an idea for a motion, you submit it in advance for the next agenda, and it will be put there for discussion. And my concern about this really was the fact that this response was copied to the entire Board. And, Mr. Solicitor, I guess, maybe for you, is this conducting email business as a quorum? Is that, that's a violation, that is a violation of the Sunshine Act.
It's not a violation of the Sunshine Act, Ms. Donches, and quit trying to make it one.
Okay, well, I need to understand, because this is a policy, and I need to understand what the policy is, because I believe in board policies, that there's nothing that says a motion can't be made at any time, and according to Robert Tools' order, I can make a motion at any time, a motion can be raised, and if it's offered and seconded and discussed, and it can be, so this idea of needing to send things ahead of time, I need to get clarification on that, and also the clarification on what can we do through email then? Yes, can you copy the whole Board?
First of all, it's email is only if there's a discussion, a back and forth on some issue, that would be a matter to be voted on the Board. Sending out information to individual Board members or the entire Board without requesting responses or anything else is not a discussion. So it doesn't fall under the Sunshine Act requirements to have discussions in public.
Could I have a Solicitor respond, please?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, and second thing, if the Solicitors express concern that we can't have motions on the agenda that suddenly appear without the opportunity for public comment, and so if you make a motion of substance, other than saying, "Let's congratulate the high school band," or something like that, not to pick on Mr. Earnshaw, and that wasn't really a motion, that was just a simple statement, if we have a motion that has any substance to it, the public deserves to have that information in advance, so all of the members of the public, not just people who you've framed as a fan, are ready to make a comment on the subject. So that's why these improper motions that have been being made have been not done that night, but have been transferred to another meeting, because then, at least, the public has notification of what the intent was of the Board to discuss, so other members of the public could show up.
So how far ahead of time does a motion have to be sent in to you?
Anytime up until probably Wednesday night, prior to the meeting, so Ms. Burzl can get it into the agenda.
Okay, so maybe I'll suggest an amendment to our policy then, so that's clear to all Board members present in future.
Mr. Ballard, quite a quarter, I believe Ms. Burzl prepares the agenda on Wednesday, so submitting it on Wednesday night would be past normal preparation. I would, I would recommend any, any items for the agenda would be more appropriately respectable for Secretary to submit it a week prior to the agenda being prepared.
Dr. Seidberg?
I was going to say, we discuss it at our, our central office meeting on Tuesdays before the board meeting, so I would prefer you to have it earlier than that.
As much notice as possible.
Okay, central office was Tuesday, did you say?
Yes, we meet Tuesday before, we meet every Tuesday, but we go over the agenda the Tuesdays before the board meeting.
Okay, but there still isn't any reason why you can't raise a motion on the floor, huh?
There is a problem with any motion that requires any substantive action by the Board in regard to public expenditures or other things that are the subject of the Sunshine Law, which you have frequently tried to cite as reasons for doing things, and it's the Sunshine Law that requires that members of the public be given the opportunity to speak on any item that's on the agenda. And that's the concern, because if it's not published in advance in the agenda, members of the public don't know that it's going to be discussed, so they can't come here and discuss it.
But it can be discussed and then postponed for a decision to a later date.
That assumes that somebody's going to table it, that presupposes it's going to be tabled. And so why would you bring up a motion that's just going to be immediately tabled? So the question is, we have the discussion, when we have the motions published in advance in the agenda?
I don't know, it just seems to me that to form war, the whole war, that something's coming up, well, it has to be on the agenda, and not do it through email, just email it to you as a superintendent, that we'd like it put on.
It's the public that has to know about it.
I know, I mean, I appreciate getting advanced notice of things that we're supposed to discuss.
Yes, it's fair, the other members of the Board might want to bring up points or counterpoints.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't think, I think of it as common, I think of other meetings, you know.
Other meetings don't have the restrictions on us that are imposed by the Sunshine Act.
Well, they're municipal meetings, of course they are. And something can be brought up and discussed, and often, you know, if there's not enough information, they'll put it back for discussion. I guess it might be, maybe it's failing to not having the committees to cover, a committee of a whole. of the whole, everything coming up here, that it's not working, other committees like having the decision. Okay.
Mr. Bacher? I wanted to ask if you have a motion that you want to bring up tonight, if you want to mention it now, so we can get it on the agenda, and we can think about it for a few weeks?
No, but I, I do understand that I have it in front of my time. It just had some, with the, during budget time, if someone has an idea for a budget, kind of like a heads-up, like thinking of that, is that proper to do through email?
You, you should send the, certainly sending it one way, not asking for comment on it.
Okay.
Simply saying, "Here's what I would like to have looked at, send it to the administration and the other board members," that's fine, that's an informational item, something you would like to have looked at, you're not asking for comment from the other board members. As long as you don't get that comment back, it's not a discussion.
Okay. So in a way, it was good that I didn't respond to you about the motion, or to the whole board about the motion, that if I would have wanted a motion, I would have just responded to you, because if I would have, say, I would have wanted to bring the motion up today, I would have responded to the whole board, then I would have had a discussion, so I would have been careful to reply just.
I think saying that you're going to bring a motion up is not a discussion of that motion, but I don't see any reason why you can't.
You can send it to all the board members of us, as long as you don't ask for a comment back on it, and then any comments are read in the public meeting.
I see, probably are great, okay, becoming clearer.
Anything else? Ms. Donches.
If someone wants to hand out a pile of research materials and share with the board, then that's okay, just informational passing all the way to the board.
That's right.
And if I would, if I do, sometimes I do email to Mrs. Sertel ahead of time the check numbers if I have time, and I know that's a preferred way, and that's fine then?
You should copy the board secretary, so that all board members possibly get the same answer back.
And that's okay then, for everybody to get the same answers back. That's informational.
That's right, it's not discussing it.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Anybody, now, let's see. Mr. Earnshaw.
I, I would just say, when a board member has any questions about anything or requests for information, those should be directed to the board secretary, not to the individual people, professional employees of the district, because we don't know about their vacation schedules, we don't know about their workloads, if it goes to the board secretary, they, then that question can be routed to the appropriate person or department or people for an answer. Don't go directly to any of the professional employees, would be my recommendation.
Yes, thank you for that, thank you.
Mr. Stoltz?
I, I just wanted to object to something, Mr. Ballard, that you said earlier, and maybe it came out not necessarily the way you intended, but you essentially accused, this certainly sounded to me like you did, Ms. Donches, of priming the parents who came to speak on Willow Lane to come speak on that subject tonight.
I didn't just mention parents.
No, you said only members of the public that you primed in advance.
That's right.
Would you like to clarify that you did not mean the people who were supposed to tonight?
I have no idea who was involved, I'm just saying that I have observed in the past that that has occurred.
Okay. Well.
I didn't take that you were speaking specifically about Willow Lane.
I, I thought that it could be interpreted that way, and I just wanted to make sure that no one was misunderstood. That said, I wanted to thank the parents who came out tonight, unless, I predict, if any of those parents come to a meeting like this to speak, frequently the elected officials don't know there's a problem. So keep coming back until you are satisfied with the outcome. Let us know what's going on. We weren't even informed of that meeting, it would have been very nice if we were, but your, your input is critical, this is an issue that I feel very strongly about. I'm, I am a budget cutter, but I did not approve cutting in $60,000, certainly until we have a plan that satisfies all of the parents, and, or at least a great majority of the parents in place, and I think that by the numbers we saw tonight, you're not satisfied, and you don't feel safe yet, and we need to rectify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz. Anything else? Nonappearing, the announcements, we had an executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation, and negotiations, and a confidential matter tonight. Next board meeting will be 7:30 PM on Monday, January 14th. All schools and offices are closed December 24th through January 1st. Allow me to change the motion to a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those closed, we are adjourned.